No delusions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aaron's here. Capros?
Yes.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have the minutes of March fourteenth. Any questions, changes? Is not there a motion? Second motion and second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Simon? Yes.
The only thing I have is the tax income received since the last meeting, one hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Anyone from the audience who should address the board tonight? If not, finance and administration, trust me, man.
The results of the sales tax referendum, it passed by a vote of seven thirty-nine to four oh three. Despite the robo-calling and the most card mailings from some non-local group called Americans for Prosperity. And from their website, it appears that they were going out and sending information on any municipality anywhere that was proposing a tax increase and automatically telling people to vote it down regardless. So it did pass. At the April meeting, after the vote is certified, we can adopt the sales tax ordinance. And we had budget workshop earlier this evening. And the public hearing on the proposed budget will be held April twenty-fifth at the village board meeting. That is your report.
Public buildings, parks, and properties, trustee Coleman.
Consensus stand-up, the public works needs to grade this area and put down either fine screenings or sod prior to opening day, which is April twenty-third.
Or maybe asphalt, depending on whether or not the plants open. Oh, yes.
Storage building update, materials have been ordered and work is expected to begin April first. I understand.
Just to comment, we're working Saturday. We're starting work Saturday?
No park rentals from April fifteenth through July tenth every year. Since the baseball schedule comes out so late and then there are rain dates for makeup games, it is almost impossible to guarantee the park on a certain date and time during, excuse me, during this period. Therefore, it's recommended that the park not be rented out during this period each year. Second meeting held with the forest preserve district to begin the partnering process. We have developed an article for our upcoming spring newsletter and the Fourth of July commission is having them provide an animal display on Sunday, July third. The library district is also going to partner with the forest preserve to provide activities and displays at the library. We are also developing a brochure to be provided to the tamperers that visit Goodenough Grove that they can also visit Beecher for their purchasing needs.
Just a correction, the forest reserve will have a demonstration or display, it's on Saturday, July second.
Saturday?
And the time, I believe, was four eight, did that sound right to you?
Yeah, I think so.
Four eight P.M.
Any questions or comments? If not, that completes my report.
Any building and zoning trustee here?
Building department, the report was enclosed for your review. Planning and zoning commission to meet March thirty-first at the Washington Township Center, here at the office. The meeting was being moved to accommodate a large crowd expected. Chamber of Commerce has been invited to attend the hearing to discuss the proposal to change the temporary sign ordinance. After the proposed ordinance was enclosed. PCC will also hold a public hearing for the library district LED sign on Pennfield and will also conduct a workshop on a request for special use for a solar farm on the vacant lot across from thirteen sixty-two Dutch-American way, which will provide all of the electric to Dutch-American foods. New construction update, a permit has been issued for a new single-family home in Prairie Park and one is pending at four twenty-four Block Street. There are also plans for buildings and townhomes in Prairie Crossing South behind McDonald's. The nursing home project is in full swing and work is ongoing at Sitten Bull and Bradley's on Gould Street.
Just one comment, we added at the last minute on the PCC agenda, request to expand the beer garden and bowling alley. They want to add a volleyball pit. What they plan on doing is extending the existing fence that they have further east, but they won't come off the building any further to the, so they'll go off to the east and put the volleyball pit there.
Peter Smith, the plant?
Yes.
Public safety trustee Coleman.
Police department wants a report enclosed for your review. Code enforcement wants a report is also enclosed for your review. Consider an ordinance authorizing the village president and clerk to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Beecher Fire District and Washington Township for the creation of a Beecher Emergency Services and Disaster Agency. This has been discussed in past meetings and it's now time to begin the establishment of this department and look for volunteers. Please see the enclosed agreement, which commits the village to a minimum of one thousand dollars per year. Like to make a motion authorizing the village president and the clerk to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Beecher Fire District and Washington Township for the creation of a Beecher Emergency Services and Disaster Agency.
Orders number twelve thirty-seven. There's a motion, and a for, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Results manual siren maintenance and annual tornado drill. This, this all occurred on March second, the siren should be in decent shape for at least another year. Chief, any comments?
No, they provided a report, I forwarded that to Bob. Everything was in order, working properly. They just had a recommendation that some of the equipment at the Gould Street sirens site need to be painted, it was rusting. And they submit a proposal, it was for seven hundred and seventy dollars, and I authorized that, and that work has been completed. So that is now done.
Okay, thank you. Update on parking issues along Cardinal Creek Boulevard in front of the junior high. Excuse me, this matter was brought up at the last meeting and the police were going to look into it. Talked to the school just so you can come back to the board with a recommendation to reduce this unsafe condition. Chief?
On Cardinal Creek between, if you're, if you're at church in Cardinal Creek, you're headed south on Cardinal Creek, the west side there, it's all mud, it's all dirt, you can see where cars are pulling off. It, when it gets wet, it just creates more of a mess when they park there. The problem is, is the kids crossing Cardinal Creek to go to cars parked on the west side. The easiest way to correct this problem is you just post no parking from Church Road on the west side, all the way just to the south entrance of the junior high. I talked with the district office about it, they concur. But there's downfalls, I mean, if we put up no parking anytime, that means no parking. Which means holidays, weekends, Saturdays, no parking means no parking.
So if they have their junior high graduation, no one can park there?
No one can park there, unless you change and put hours on it. I mean, you can always do that, but then...
Or bag the signs, you could bag them, I guess.
Yeah.
He should put hours on it. What are, what are the signs on the, what side of Miller's say?
Eight thirty to four, I believe.
Weekdays?
Yeah.
I hesitate to bring this up, but even if you allow parking, after you're so many, I probably won't, right?
When it's wet, yes, you still have that problem.
I hesitate, I'm suggesting putting some back down.
No, no, no.
It's just a thought.
Or you just eliminate the parking there, I mean, that's... And there's other places to park.
The school's been there since, what, oh seven? And the road's been in since oh seven? And it's two thousand fifteen and now we've got a problem there, like, what's changed?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, what's caused the problem to change in the last eight years?
I think there's more parents driving to pick up their kids, that line is getting longer. If you look at when, when they pick up their kids in the afternoon, they line up all the way down that new concrete curb they have. They're almost, sometimes they go, almost go to where Bald Eagle is and around the corner. So you got other ones that they, they're gonna park on the west side and then the buses come through and kids are running across the street between the parked cars and it's, it's hard for the buses to get through because the cars parking on the west side don't want to park in the mud because they sink.
Buses don't go through there, they go around the other side. They go down Church Road and then turn in on that other parking lot.
I think it's when they're coming from the bus garage.
They all come down church, I go down there and pick my grandchildren up, I've never seen a bus on, on that road. I see them heading north all the time.
Now this mud that we're seeing, are there ruts, ruts along?
They're going through the ditch, Ron, and that, and in that area there, it, you know, it does, the ground gets saturated and literally pools, it holds a lot of water. And it takes a lot of time for it to dissipate, if you went over there tomorrow afternoon, you'll see it, you know, it's full of water right now. Do you have a recommendation?
I recommend you just put no parking there, I can work it out with Buddy and see how, how far you take that no parking.
No parking this side of the street? This side of the street. I thought we did that once before though, and then didn't we change it back?
I don't think we ever posted signs, I don't know if we ever did that.
Yeah, we put them up there and then for some reason we ended up taking them down. Pretty much throughout most of the subdivisions in the village and everything, you're still in the parking lot on one side of the street anyway, right? Yeah, because of the width and the farther. For herself or emergency vehicles sake. So I mean...
That's correct.
It's really no different, I mean, once you get further south, you end up GM subdivision where there's only parking a lot on one side of the street anyway. Basically, you're following what the rest of the subdivision is by just making it no parking on the one side. And then if you have to do it just hours, so if you're worried about special events, ballgames or anything like that afterwards, which I don't, I don't think I've ever witnessed anyone parking there for anything, but I mean, maybe what are you looking at for one, one event, graduation? I mean, you could bag, bag the signs, but I guess if, if you have a time on these parking, is it, is the unsafe condition any different at, on Saturday morning than it is when school lets out? It's still an unsafe condition if they're parking on that side and kids are going across there, I don't know.
My understanding, it's only when school lets out. Until any time it's a problem.
Maybe the time you're parking there is if you have an event at the school. Other than any, the, the ball fields are only being used for practice right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the only other thing. And it wouldn't be no parking, park, stopping or standing.
Yeah, we can do that. Just to the south entrance or all the way down?
I would, maybe to the end of the pan. South end of the pan.
Okay. Some no parking signs?
Yes, that's my recommendation.
Do you hear motion on there? I don't think so.
Chief, any other comments?
No, unless anybody had any questions from me about the report or the code report.
Just to inform you that we had a call where someone stopped in yesterday or today, I don't remember which day it was, on Hunter's Drive all the way down at the east end when it bends around into, what's the street?
Valence Cove?
Valence Cove. Some residents may request either increased enforcement, traffic enforcement, or signs for children playing, schoolchildren playing. They're claiming the cars are coming around the bend quite fast and there's a lot of kids in that general area playing.
They specify at a certain time?
I don't recall.
No, they didn't give us specific, yeah, I don't know. But it's, it's when children are out playing is when they were concerned, so I guess it's during the day.
Okay.
Okay, there are no other questions, that completes my report.
Public works trustee Forrest.
Water department and sewer department wants a report, it's enclosed for your review, along with the water billing register for the months of January and February. It would be remiss if I did not bring up, up the bill ratio, which is something we know we've all been working on. And I believe for the second billing register in a row now, we've hit above seventy-five percent, which is a positive thing. National average is, according to the AWA, is seventy-five percent, we keep it at seventy-five point nine. So it seems as though our constant persistence on that problem is hopefully paying off and stays that way. Sewer treatment plant inspection update, the committee met with Derek Wold on March tenth. And as we discussed before, we went over a bunch of different proposals and options for the design of the sewer plant. Derek will be here on April eleventh to explain a lot of the issues that we went over and what we're doing to try to keep this project under the, at that eight million dollar mark. Also, for any trustee that would be interested, we're gonna be going to Plainfield wastewater treatment plant just to observe some of the new things that, that they have that is what the IEP is mandating that we put in, such as the belt press and the UV lighting disinfection. So if anyone else is interested in going and touring a wastewater plant, they're more than welcome to join us, but I have... Okay.
Yeah, right now, I think, right now it's you, Jonathan, Frank, and...
It's okay.
Thank you, that's a good sign up.
All right, but so again, but Derek will be here on the eleventh, we'll be going over all those things. Consider a motion combining the Pennfield and Birch Elm water main projects. We discussed trying to do that, keeping them in line. And by combining, we discussed wrapping them in with the IEP alone. Our IEP alone is at a one point eight five. We're doing it at the same time, it frees up more money to be able to do other water main projects without tying our cash up into the Elm Birch project. And by incorporating the two, we should see quite significant savings in the Elm Birch project with wrapping it into a large project on Pennfield, all bit at the same time. So I'll make a motion to combine Pennfield and the Birch Elm water main projects. Guess that's it.
So motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions in motion?
Aaron's?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
All right, Maxwell Street Storm Sewer Project.
I will be starting that project next week, a couple days it should be completed. Yeah. Oh, is it April first next week?
You're pushing it, you, you said it would be done by the end of the year, then I asked calendar year or fiscal year?
Yeah, it was fiscal year.
You said calendar, I said would be happy, it was done by fiscal and pushing fiscal, but that park's been killing us. All right, outstanding tree maintenance removal and replacement list. Over the winter, public works combined, made a combination of lists and have one master list to work off of. There's sixty-two addresses in the village awaiting service, whether it be a dead tree to stump, trim request, or strong forest rotation, or a request for a new parkway tree. So summer's on the way, hopefully we'll start making some headway on that list.
Well, actually, we were gonna be, Bob had informed me today, we still have some money left over. I counted up twenty-six stumps, so we're trying to get as many of those taken care of in the next couple weeks. How many, I don't know, depends on the dollar amount. I don't think we do twenty-six with the money we have left.
Yeah.
We can get at least half of the month. Put a nice dent into it. And we'll go by eight of those stumps.
Consider a motion authorizing the trade-in of the two thousand two Ford New Holland TC thirty-three tractor and replacing it with a twenty sixteen Ford, Ford, is it Ford New Holland?
Yeah, Ford, yeah.
Okay, twenty sixteen Ford New Holland Boomer forty-one from DeYoung's equipment. TC thirty-three's got some leaking seals in the rear axle. It'd be kind of a big project when looking into it. It was suggested that we look into a new and bigger model. Originally, I thought the cost would be too high, however, when it came back, the numbers aren't too bad. So the proposal would be to combine the trade-in with the old tractor. With the discount with the new tra, or with the old tractor, the discount... The list priced up, let's start at the beginning, the list price of the tractors, thirty-five thousand. Received a twenty-eight percent discount. Then with the trade-in, that would leave our balance basically at sixteen thousand seven hundred. Typically, we think we'd get about fifteen years of life out of this. This would, so my recommendation is that, which was brought up in, in budget workshop, is that there was seventeen thousand dollars from general fund that would be used from reserves to pay for this. In actuality, what I'd like to see is, it's basically all the same thing, that money would be actually deposited into the capital sinking fund and the capital sinking fund paid for this new equipment. This would add another piece of equipment into the cycle of the capital sinking fund and then that money would be paid back to the capital sinking fund in an amount of eleven hundred dollars and thirteen, eleven, eleven hundred and thirteen dollars over fifteen years. So I guess I'll make a motion authorizing the trade-in of the twenty-two Ford New Holland TC thirty-three for a twenty sixteen New Holland Boomer forty-one. This is gonna give our staff a lot more, you should be able to, Buddy, you wanna go over, you'll be able to trim, mow ditches with this.
You know what, yes, we'll be able to...
Versus the other ones, got a lot more lifting ability.
The TC thirty-three is undersized for us to do anything, basically, with it, at our time moving tables. We'll be able to mow larger areas, do the ditches that we're required to do. And we'll be moving tables and other things at the park. The equipment will basically be headed at the park and stored there. That's about it.
And you can use it for snow and landscaping and street work.
I wanna say we ran, we, we borrowed the tractor for the day and ran it to its paces, what we would expect it to do and it performed cancelable, where the TC thirty-three is not able to lift like the bleachers in the park when we have to move them. This one can move the bleachers in the park.
You made a motion there, or did you?
Yeah, I made one.
We did, was there a second?
No, second.
Yes, we're in, we're on the... Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
That was my report. You spent it off, thank you. Just have, just have one question. We have the same offer on the skid steer, and since we're doing the budget, and I didn't want to do this at the workshop because it's, it's something that would happen this fiscal year, we probably brought on it at April meeting. It would cost us nine thousand to replace the three-year-old skid steer and get that on a cycle to where for only a couple thousand, every few years, we could rotate that piece of equipment with a bumper bump and warranty. And we would never have any maintenance on it at all, is that correct, Buddy? Right, and basically, same thing with the Boomer forty-one tractor, you know, that's what a lot of municipalities have been doing for a long time. The, the low payment or, you know, the equity payment that we put into it, more than pays for the preventive maintenance that we would have to be paying out of pocket. It, it's basically paying for itself, and every three years, you're getting a new piece of equipment. I know Crete's been doing it for a long time, Park Forest, Richmond Park, they don't even take the, like I said, plastic off the seats and it's just an ongoing thing. The benefit, it's a win-win situation for the Youngs because we're purchasing this at a price that they can't even buy it for. And they like it that then we trade it in, there aren't as many hours and they can actually move that piece of equipment faster than they can the newer stuff they have on the floor.
When we, I, I just did some research today, me and Bob went over the numbers on it, just to get, kinda give everyone an idea. On that skid steer, we bought it in September of thirteen. This is when we, we traded in our old skid steer that we had had for twelve years. We traded in that old skid steer with the trade-in and purchased the brand-new skid steer. Our out-of-pocket was twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars is what we paid. But we're getting a trade-in for that on a new one, it's, we're being offered thirty-five thousand for a trade-in on that. So we used it for three years and are actually getting... Now, my new, on that trade-in, we just spent about thirty-five hundred dollars on brand-new tires on that skid steer, but still we're being offered thirty-five for a trade-in on that. The new machine is, comes out to be like fifty-seven thousand, but with the thirty-five trade and then you take the, the discount, which is like twenty-eight percent on that fifty-five, and then with the trade, our balance due would be like nine thousand. And that would put us at another three years of bumper-to-bumper warranty on the skid steer and everything else to where if you can do that every three years, these machines hold their, their value so much that when you get that kind of a discount, by the time it comes, time to trade it in, three years down the road, once the warranty's up, you can get a brand-new one with a new warranty and your cost is very minimal.
The amount of federal discount we get under the NGPA program exceeds the depreciation of the tractor. Now, this tractor we're buying is gonna be a little bit of an upgrade because the old tractor we had didn't have air conditioning, is that right?
That's correct.
And the guys are complaining that when you have it in the summertime, you've gotta seal that, that unit up with the glass doors, there's no breathing room at all in there and that can get a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty degrees inside that cab. So they're asking to have air conditioning in there for summer, because they don't need it for winter, of course, but in the summer it's bad, so...
Well, you, you got other options, I mean, you could get a chain on that outside, but then they're exposed to the cold during the winter. Either, either way, it's a great deal, it's a new piece of equipment. And three years down the road, I, I don't even know if there'll be the nine thousand dollars that we can do. Just a few things we gotta work out with. The thing is, is that this tractor was never, came out of the sinking fund. The skid steer did come out of the sinking fund, so there's money due to, on it, to the sinking fund for so many years.
From the original purchase.
From the original purchase, from the one that, that we have now. So the question is, do you take that nine thousand added to it net? But I mean, that's stuff we can figure out through finance.
Let mercy take the wheel on that one up, kinda. But that was it. Is that something you wanna do? I mean, should we put the skid steer on the agenda or are you guys like, nah, just keep the one you have? It's entirely up to you guys what you wanna do. I don't wanna get the Youngs excited and then knock them down, you know what I mean? If it's something we don't wanna do, then we'll just tell them upfront. But if it's something you wanna consider, then we'll get the ball rolling on a formal.
You can consider it.
Yeah.
How long are your tires lasting?
The ones we, the ones we just put on it, and they were fourteen hundred bucks, I believe, they're the heaviest, duty-est ones and they just came out with them. So I don't know, the standard ones, you get probably two years out of them.
You're just trying to trade it in for retired on it.
That's why I'm, I'm okay with, you know, either way, you know, if you wanna wait a year with it. Like I said, you, you said we just bought brand-new tires for it. I mean, the only thing you are possibly gonna lose is maybe, you know, a little more trade-in value on it, but I can't see you losing that much. The bumper bump and warranty does come off, though. Right.
That's true, that is the other deciding factor, April will pop.
And that's when something's gonna happen and it's gonna cost you.
The Boomer's five years, the skid steer was three.
Yeah. I'd rather learn the lesson than buying the tires and not take a chance on waiting for a year and then having a major...
Okay, that, I, I'd draw...
I disagree with that argument. Because I'll tell you, last time they fixed...
'Cause I tell you, last time they fixed that old tractor we had, when that pump went out, that was a three thousand dollar repair. Remember?
Well, I think, let's put it on the agenda and.
Okay.
Get the numbers, rather than me spitting out numbers into the air, we can have them written down, the board can look at and make a decision.
I have two things. This, this Sunday, which I thought was the eighth, but it's the third, I read the numbers wrong. But if you haven't noticed, on the corners of the town, we will be doing, starting, doing the spring flush during the week, starting Sunday night, probably ending Thursday morning. And then you can schedule on the week of the eighteenth, we will be doing street sweeping at nighttime. And that would be probably also starting, I guess it's the seventeenth, that Sunday night to Thursday morning also, or Friday morning.
When do you, when do you start mosquito spray?
Usually depends on the weather, but probably end of May, or not end of May, probably end of April, first week of May. You know, when things start hopping a little bit.
All right, the spring newsletter update. Articles have been written and the newsletter letter is being drafted. We are targeting April eighteenth as the mailing date. When the newsletter is published, a draft will be sent to the board for review. Vincent's Trail Bike Path update. Enclosed is a letter which I sent to trustee Robin Kelly and also to LG Sims for some grant money possibly for the project. There's also some meetings scheduled with some grant coordinators in April. To try to see if there's funding out there. I did not hear back from either yet as of yet. But those things take a little while, I guess. Promotional brochures being developed for the use at the Forest Reserve, as we've talked before. Goodno Grove has a campground, and many out-of-towners camp there and are always asking where they can get supplies or leisure activities. Forest Reserve has asked that the village for a brochure of some of the local businesses and attractions. And the staff is in the process of drafting such a brochure to promote our community and its businesses. Major rail line and rail port proposed to run along the county line. The project is being called the Great Lakes Basin Railway, is meant to skirt around the Chicago link and link all of the Class One railroads together, similar to what I two ninety-four and I three fifty-five do for the cars. Focal point of the project is the Mantino Rail Port, where trains can be pulled off the UP CSX main line and cars transferred to the east-west routes. Enclosed is entire, the entire informational package, which does not really go into a lot of detail of it about the proposed project, but more about the process of getting the project approved. Right now, it looks like there, the project is short on investment and does not have any of the Class One railroad support as of yet. There is an informational meeting in Mantino on Monday, April eleventh, from five-thirty to eight. This is the night of the board meeting, the meeting will begin with an open house at five-thirty in Mantino. So, what we plan to do is meet at the village hall at five o'clock, go to the open house segment, and then leave for Mantino at six-thirty, so we can be back for the meeting, village meeting at seven. We can then discuss the project at the April eleventh board meeting and direct staff to submit comments. One of them most likely would be the need for Beecher bypass due to the truck traffic this rail port will generate. See the enclosed report on this project.
To remember, I believe, Bob and I attended one of the hearings for the Eliana, and this rail project was mentioned in one of the early-on meetings that we went to, and to my surprise, I think Bob agrees, it surfaced again. So, I don't know, like Bob's, they're basically saying, we don't know if it has lanes or not, so we'll see.
Do we have enough time now for us to go there and get back?
Yeah, we'll make it till we got.
Either Genette, Genette will stay and make sure the village.
I mean, should we?
Building is open, so if you could get your board.
If it's not on the Genette, do you make a motion to delay the meeting to seven-thirty? If it's a nice one? If it's an open house, like the other ones, it's gonna be a walk-through, like station-type thing, we should be able to make our own time to be able to get there, get done, and get back, so.
We'll leave it now, okay.
Unfortunately, Frank, you got a job for you.
You do, sure.
I started something, and it's something that I, it needed to be approved, and Marcy picked up on it. And last year, we asked Baumanns if Baumanns would be willing to put, I'll call it a wayfinding sign, where their good beer sign is, to advertise the businesses in the old downtown area, now they're beginning to feel we need to resurrect this and probably get it moving. We have some samples, it doesn't have to be this, but if you have any questions, believe Marcy or I or Bob or whoever it may be. I went to Lance last year, and I asked him about it, he said he would be willing if you would come up with something, you know, show what we wanna do. And he decided whether or not he'd be willing to do that, and at what cost, they didn't get that far yet. So, if you would, we had thought at the very top, he would have his Baumann sign to advertise his business. And then we would put underneath that the signs of the businesses going downtown, just probably cons how you do it. But if you would take over that project, we'll give you some information. If you go talk to Lance, remind him that I talked to him last year. It's possible that one of the other businesses may have, may have also contacted him. But that business may not know that we had this in the making, so possibly could have used it, which I don't know.
Yeah, I would, you know, I'd rather have all the businesses on there with arrows and just one business.
And like I said, it's probably kind of how we do it, but if you know what we're talking about, like some of people in Mantino, it's probably the biggest one right now, they use all the signs. My report of the dispatch consolidation, it's still progressing, in fact, it's planning and zoning, Bob's gotta do the planning and zoning all the other meetings. I think it's self-explanatory legislative updates, these for itself, we're hearing that they want it, may not be approved for none here, nothing like that. I mentioned earlier that Sophie's is opening up in the old Bill's Downtown Restaurant, Katie Corrigan from the Police Department. It is a, they do have a beer and wine license, they contend to have food, which is required by ordinance, and they intend to put in gaming machines. And he's been doing quite a bit of work. And there are other prospects in town that are considering that, but that's the only one that really is seeming to progress. The other ones, we haven't seen much more than that. If you remember at the last meeting, I brought up about what to do about Perry Crossing South Pond. And Bob had a lot of details and a lot of questions and so, it's, it's very simple, is whether we tell the attorney to proceed with forming an HOA or something to cover the lots around the pond. And I had thirty-one lots, I had a number of the lots scheduled from, it's lots twenty-nine to sixty, and it's a total of thirty-one lots. None of those lots are sold, the exception of one. One lot is sold behind the home off of Orchard. If you remember, that lot was sold, all the other lots are not sold yet, it's around the pond and around the drainage to the pond. That's what we're specifically talking about, whether we want that to be an HOA, SSA, or do we just simply, like we did with the other pond that we just took over and say, we will continue to blow it, because there is a right of way to that pond, as Bob's mental issues.
When you say, Mr. President, the twenty-nine to sixty, does that include like lot forty-nine and fifty over here? Or are you just going around the pond, or?
Around the pond and the drainage to the pond. With my magnifying glass, I read it to be.
That would be all the interior lots, even, even all the way down to the lane.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify.
That's what I have in my mind, and again, whatever you guys think. And again, we don't, if we don't have a decision, we don't have to make that tonight, too, because it's beginning to be clear. I need to give the attorney some direction.
So, actually, lots forty-two through fifty-seven don't have pond access, they would still be. Maybe fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Ah, sure, yeah, okay. Basically, all the way down the lane, all the way up the lane, around Forest, and then from down a hole, down First Street, all on the interior lots, that there's a drainage ditch like that goes feeds that lot, it'll be all those. The outer ones, I don't think would be fair, because you've got other lots that are, of course, supposed to be paying in that HOA or whatever it is to be. And it was never recorded, so I don't think it would be fair to even include them into this. That's why I'm only saying the interior lots, or the village can just simply do it.
Yeah, and my only, my only issue with the interior lots is, again, I can see if they were gonna do it, the lots directly around that pond. But I don't know if I see a difference between lots forty-two through fifty-seven being any different from the other ones on the other side of her, 'cause they don't have any access to that pond, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and again, I just mentioned that, you know, the reason why I said that, there was a disway feeding that pond, you're right, you're right.
See that either way. The biggest issue when the town, when they were talking about the townhouses getting involved in that, and I know the HOA was never brought up or was never recorded, the biggest issue that everybody had was when Slido Five, or Slido Five, whoever he was, came up with a budget for that, they came up with this outrageous budget of putting in, you know, forty trees and landscaping, and everybody else who basically just needs it for drainage is saying, we don't care if it looks like a golf course, just someplace for the water to go. And, you know, that was a big issue then, people that had no access to it, the people around it would have a little more of a vested interest of how it looks, where nobody else cares, just let the water dump and, you know, make sure it's a bone.
And then the other thing, too, is if you, if you pay attention to the pond, if you let it grow, it seems like it levels off, which I believe that was the planting that was in there at one time. Okay, the bad thing is, is then we're required to cut it, and if you're cutting that, which now lays its bottom of the pond, when the pond fills up, it goes in the sewer system and jams it. So, I would think if the village would do it, or we would possibly wanna consider not cutting it as often or whatever, so that that doesn't go in our system, and sometimes it still needs to be aside.
But then we'd be violating our own weed order. Unless we declared it some kind of.
What, native claimings?
Yeah, yeah. I know what you're saying, I think it makes sense that a bottom of a pond shouldn't be mowed like a golf course, it should have, it should be up a little bit, because it keeps it from eroding, you know?
There's pros and cons to each, I mean, some of them, I mean, if they're taller to me, then you have rodents or whatever in there, and that's why the homeowners on the Orchard side, which actually are part of this, they actually cut twenty feet into it so that nothing's near their berms or whatever, in case maybe another rodent is coming in. So, it's whatever you wanna do, and like I said, we went to second lady. And I, Bob, I noticed something in your mode, the bank owned it, but you said it's in foreclosure again, the bank is in foreclosure?
No, it was foreclosed on, Landover bought it from Rudy and Ron Recker.
So, nothing's changed.
And then, and then Landover bought it, and then Landover sold it to Slido Five, and Slido Five allowed it to be foreclosed. That groundsman foreclosed on twice on it. And it's just a legal nightmare, I mean, it's, the paper trail on that thing is a nightmare.
'Cause there was originally paper that was drawn up to have the HOA, and it was never recorded.
And included businesses.
It included the businesses, it included the townhomes, but nobody ever recorded it.
Actually, as a resident, I was at the hearings.
I have a question, lot sixty, that's the one that's been sold, correct?
If it's behind that one house, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that one, that would be included in this or not?
Yes.
It would be, but my philosophy is, it wasn't there when they bought it, why should I give it, might make them do it now? That's why I'm trying to get this going before anybody else sells any of those lots.
So, it might only be the bank's old lots that would, the bank would have to be firmly coerced into submitting this.
I don't think it would be fair, Gail, but.
No, I just, I'm just wondering, do you have an estimate of what the cost would be to just to mow the thing, maintain?
The bank ever tell you what the life's gonna be?
No, I, I would figure if you needed seventy-five hundred a year divided by, how many lots are there? Six, what is it, sixty divided by sixty minus twenty-one?
Thirty, thirty, that's what, thirty.
Two hundred and fifty dollars if you needed seventy-five hundred a year, it'd be two fifty a lot.
Per year.
Now, if you only want to charge a hundred, then you're only gonna get three grand a year for, for mowing that. It probably has to be mowed four or five times a year.
If it's wet more. And then, then if it's wet.
They need the one behind me every two weeks, the one that are.
That'd be, that'd be the right way to do it.
Part of the problem is if it gets wet, they can't do it, then it could get.
Right, and then it sits, and then they're.
And if you do it more often, it takes, it goes a lot quicker, so you might save money by doing it more often than going through the week.
Table it again, no thoughts?
He kicked table on that, but.
I know, I mean.
Sooner or later, we got.
You gotta do something about it, yeah.
You brought this up twice.
Let me put it to you this way, I'm not hearing anything else from the audience today, so.
Come on, John, we know you're gonna fall.
You can tell the attorney to keep, keep trying, and if he fails, then we know where we stand.
Keep drawing what?
To keep trying to formally attempt, do the HOA, where we were going with SS.
Well, what I think we need to do is call, table, and give a price, for maintaining that pond for years, so we know exactly what dollar the cost is gonna be. And then divide it by the number of lots the mayor has in the zone and see if it's feasible. I mean, I don't know if two hundred and fifty a year for a lot is feasible, somebody might really walk it at two fifty-eight, you know?
Let's do that.
That should be.
Yeah.
Who do they have to get a price, we'll table one more time, so that he has a dollar. Okay, and last but not least, how many comment about the HR Green gave us the proposal to do the, to actually complete the quiet zone? I don't see any sense of even that, bringing that up on the table, number one, we didn't budget it, we don't have the money, the money for it to do the quiet zone to begin with, and/or we made a statement that we not do anything until the state gets their act together, and then we can find out what to do, and I just wanna make sure that everybody agrees that we don't really have a funding source for it right now. Everybody agree with that? I'll take that as a yes.
Yeah. We don't have the money.
And with that, is there any other old business to come for the work? Anything other new business? You don't have any new business now? Is there a motion in adjourned?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.